Alright, Fred should hopefully pop up in there.
Anyone give you a minute, see if he should.
Sure, no, he will be able to hear, but you can't vote or on minutes or participate. But he'll, but he'll be able to see the, see this and he has access to the materials and things.
We don't need to wait for him.
Um, so, um, you can start, um, and I can send him another note, so let him know that the zoom is open.
I'm not sure. Well, we did. Yeah, alright, uh, like to follow the Plan Zoning Commission meeting for October twenty-fourth, twenty-twenty-four. First item on our agenda, roll call.
Alright, um, well, one moment, please. Alright, uh, member Alfonso.
Here.
Uh, member Cap, or member Bransky, I'm sorry.
Here.
Um, member Cap. Uh, member O'Brien.
There's.
Member Johnson.
Here.
Member Castaneda.
Here.
Chair Shurzaga. Alright, and then, um.
Yeah, so as the interviews, there's a couple of appearance commission members in the audience. Thanks, let's stand up and, and, um, remember Shaggy, are you ready to run your news night?
Thanks for the audience.
You can sit in the front row if you want. We don't have a problem with the appearance commission. Right, uh, we have to approve our minutes from the October tenth meeting, any revisions, additions, adjustments?
I have two corrections on page five. Um, one is near the top where it speaks, uh, about monthly events. I'd just like to read this, it could be included in the minutes. Uh, the applicant Miss Land stated that the events could be held in the reception, four hundred square feet and the serenity space, three hundred square feet for a total of seven hundred square feet. Member Cap commented that six feet per square foot per person, a total of seven hundred square feet could accommodate a hundred persons. The second is also on page five, near the bottom. It starts out member O'Brien, that three line comment refers to another case, not the case that the minutes were for. Should be deleted.
Thank you.
Thank you. Anyone else? No one once, one twice?
Nope.
Alright, can get, uh, motion to approve the minutes as amended, so. Anybody got a second?
No second.
Alright, moved by member O'Brien, second by member Johnson. Get a roll call, please.
Member Alfonso.
Same.
Uh, member O'Brien.
Aye.
Member Johnson.
Yes.
Member Castaneda.
Yes.
Uh, Chair Pro Tem Bransky.
Yes, alright. Uh, next item on our agenda is any public comments. Anyone in the audience have any comments pertaining to either the agenda or something at large? I think that was a no. Moving on regular business, um, as luck would have it, you've stumbled into a planning and zoning commission training session to be presented by American Planning Association Illinois chapter in partnership with the Chaddick Institute at DePaul University. So buckle up and let's go.
Alright.
That's, and oh, and I got a sign in sheet that I'll start getting passed around when I've started up here and then work it's made.
That one is just for the planning and zoning commission itself, there's a separate public sign in here for those attendees.
Gotcha.
It's under PDF, um, at the bottom right there, there it is.
Alright, yes, let's go down.
You can, uh, that, up the arrow with the up arrow there.
Yeah. Oops.
Or you can move it down there.
There we go.
There we are.
Okay, well, thank you for having us this evening. As introduced, uh, Jason and I, and I will have Jason introduce himself more formally in a moment. Um, I'm David Silverman, I'm a planner, a planner in a former life and an attorney now with Anson Blinkin Chicago. Uh, we are a local government law firm, we work with a number of different communities and their planning commissions and zoning boards, as well as their boards and city councils. Um, I've been more involved with the state chapter, um, the Illinois, uh, chapter of the American Planning Association since I moved to Illinois several years ago. Um, and this program has really taken off in that time, so we do these, there's a bunch of us, Jason and I are just two people, but there's a lot of people, uh, planners, lawyers who are involved in this program, who bring to citizen planners such as yourselves, training, um, on the history of planning, ethical issues in planning, legal issues in planning, uh, practice management tips, best practices, all sorts of things. And that's, you're gonna get a pretty good waterfront, uh, just, uh, description of all these issues tonight. Um, one thing Jason and I do like to do is we will take questions as we go. Uh, there are breaks in the, uh, presentation, um, that also will allow for questions, but again, as we're going through the material tonight, um, you can certainly ask questions of us and we'll respond, and that's almost always better than listening to us drone on for three hours about, you know, this, so it'll be, it'll be a good exchange of ideas. And we'll be interested to hear some of your issues as they come up.
And just to introduce myself, uh, quickly, um, my name is Jason Berry. I work for the Village of Lamont, uh, so I'm Angeles counterpart for the Village of Lamont. And, uh, I've worked there for seven years, and, uh, on other evenings, I'm in your shoes. I live in the city of Blue Island and I'm a planning and zoning commissioner for the city of Blue Island, which also recently combined their planning and zoning board of appeals. So I love taking, um, the opportunity to talk to plan commissioners because I, I am a plan commissioner, uh, as well as a, a practicing planner. So here's this.
Let's just do one thing real quick, I did neglect to say that we have people from DePaul, the Chaddick Institute, Joe Sweeterman and students of his are here to observe at least for what, the first twenty, twenty-five minutes, uh, what we're gonna be doing, sorry, I just wanted to make sure we did that.
Sounds good.
Yeah.
Um, so here's, you know, the agenda for today, uh, we'll get through as, as much as we get through. Um, as David said, we'd rather hear from you, um, and, and, you know, get questions as, as we go through the material. You have the whole PowerPoint there in front of you, so if there's something we don't make it to, you could always, uh, review that later. Having been a plant commissioner or being a plant commissioner, so like, just, we like to know who we're working with, so, you know, if anybody wants to answer some of these questions, you just go left or right?
Sure.
Alright.
Okay, um, I'm Maureen Alfonso, I've been, I started out on the plan commission. I don't know, twenty-five years ago, I suppose.
Fantastic.
And then, uh, joined the, the, uh, planning zone, uh, board, um. Uh, I just like being involved in the, in the town and what's happening, and I'm very happy to serve and, you know, try to support the citizens of Homewood.
At twenty-five years, that's a long time, I looked at some agendas, this is a very active board, uh, so that is, that's a lot of work, thank you.
Mike, you get to say.
Well, number one, I apologize for coming late, I did mention that I was gonna be here at seven oh five, but I spent the last five minutes in the parking lot with our, um, dear mayor, so.
Oh, no.
That is my.
Mister Mayor, so.
Yeah, yeah, he said they came in to talk, so, uh, my name is Michael Cap. I have been on the commission since nineteen ninety-eight, but, um, I had a split ten years, so about, hmm, two thousand and four, I got traded to the zone board and I was there for a while until, uh, you know, help me out, cause.
Oh, till we, till we.
Cause, uh, I was on the plant commission with Maureen way back when, and, uh, I'm the zone board with, uh, Seth and Bill. Um, so anyway, it merged and here we are. Um, why did you become a commissioner? Uh, in an earlier lifetime, I actually worked in municipal government. I certainly, uh, believe in, um, uh, it's, it's an obligation, it's what we ought to do to, uh, give of ourselves for the greater good of our community. So that's certainly why I am here. Um, I have a, um, an interesting, um, educational pedigree. I have a couple of engineering degrees, an MBA and a degree in urban planning. So a lot of, uh, what I have done in my life has had to do with land development. Um, I'm sort of sensitive to, um, the nuts and bolts of what it takes to, uh, uh, put a plan together, and to be honest, the way I look at it is, uh, my role here on the board is I keep the petitioners honest, you know, when they say they can't do something, you know, I'm here to say, well, you know, um, I can tell you that you can do this, you know, so, um, that's part of that. And what are your favorite and least parts? Yeah, that's probably it. I, I, I like serving here, we have a good group of people. If I'm the last one, um, to, uh, share with you, I'm sure you got everybody else's story. Second, oh my gosh, I'm sorry, but this is, yeah, I'm, I'm proud and honored and privileged to serve with such a, um, very good group of dedicated people. And, uh, if any of you live in Homewood, you should, uh, feel assured that we, uh, take our roles seriously and we try to do the best that we can.
Very good.
Uh, Seth Bransky, I'm acting as pro tem chairman this evening, but usually I'm there, it's here, but whatever. Uh, I'm a legacy, my dad was on this board for fifteen years, nineteen seventy to nineteen eighty-five. And my parents were always, uh, uh, involved in local politics, helping whatever, who, like, many of the guys, the pitchers, they used to have copies at my house when I was a little kid, uh, in, involved in local government, uh, my dad ran for various offices at, at certain points. Um, so my family's just always been involved in local Homewood politics, so it just felt kind of natural to, to volunteer for the board. And I've been on, I think, almost twenty years, cause well, I don't think it was two thousand and four, cause I was on zoning when you got traded, so.
Yeah.
A little less than that, but whatever. Um, so it's.
Draft choice to be named.
Yeah, and my background is construction, um, infrastructure, construction, right now I'm on multiple CTA jobs and a metro job and, um, gonna be on the big, um, red line extension, so just, I think that's kind of what drew me to it in the beginning was to be involved in, um, hopefully lots of construction, but sometimes you gotta take the fences and the decks and the pools with the construction and planning, so it's a mix.
My name is William O'Brien, um, I've been doing this for forty-one years. Uh, thirty-five in the village of Homewood and another six years in the village of Madison, uh, where I was vice chairman of the plan commission. I started here in the zoning commission and then it was joined, uh, to the current planning and zoning. Like, member Cap, uh, I feel an obligation to, uh, give back to the community that I live in. And, uh, that goes across the board. If I'm in a church, I volunteer for whatever, uh, my time and talent and treasure will, uh, uh, where it will be needed. So, uh, I started out in corporate life, uh, with a building materials manufacturer. Uh, later in life, my wife and I had a small construction company, uh, throughout my career. Uh, even when I was with, uh, law firms, uh, I did a tremendous amount of, uh, build out of space. Merging offices, closing plants, uh, building plants. Uh, it's been an interesting journey, so, um, when, I always want to have a full discussion about something because I've seen many things, many topics come up and they're taken care of matter-of-factly, and everyone, for example, if you have a meeting, you should go around the table. If you have eight or ten people, go around the table and ask every one of them to participate. There's a topic, participate, what's your opinion of it? Otherwise, you're gonna find over time that there will be four or five people that will, um, uh, take care of the conversation and another four or five will sit back and say nothing and another two might offer something. So, uh, we've gotta have a full conversation about all of the matters that come before us for the benefit of Homewood. Thank you.
Uh, I guess there's a reason I'm, Elizabeth and I are sitting at the end because we have the, the least of them experienced on this.
I guess they, I guess.
I, I think it, it's like the Supreme Court, you know. The younger you are.
The rookie under the bench.
Right, right, yeah. Yeah, I, I, I've been on the board for, uh, about three years now, why did I come to the, become a commissioner, quite frankly? Asked of it to, to get involved and, I, I, with that request, I felt an obligation to, uh, to be part of representing the needs of the community as they relate to zoning and planning matters, uh, for people who don't come before boards like this with, with, uh, issues and problems. I think it's important for us though to always be reflective of what, uh, the community is and, and, uh, we're not the court of of, uh, what they call stareisces where we come in and, and, uh, uh, try to lord it over people to, uh, embarrass them or to, uh, make them uncomfortable when they present their problems, their zoning problems, whether it's a fence or something in your yard, a construction, whatever. But to be there for them, to, to be an ear for them, uh, and take their concerns seriously. Uh, and so I have enjoyed that, as far as the least, uh, I, I think everybody on the board probably knows, my least favorite is, after working, all of us, for all of us, this is a voluntary position, volunteer position. Uh, and so for me, after working long hours and long weekends, uh, coming in and having to, address these issues, but sometimes not being able to get straight to the point and, and get the matters resolved, um, can sometimes be a little bit, uh, dry, so, but other than that, I think, uh, being a part of the community and, and assisting the community with, uh, uh, being a, I, I see myself as a representative of the community in that sense for these issues.
I'm Liz Castaneda, uh, so I am the babyest of the babies, and I've been here for two years. Um, and so I became a commissioner because I moved here about three years ago. Moved around for this because I really liked the just mix of everything and just the community itself, you could tell that it was really special. And so I became a commissioner because I like the idea of being able to help shape that and, you know, continue to make the economic fabric of this community something that people are gonna want to, want to come to, uh, least favorite part is having to say no.
That's hard.
If I could add something, I've had the experience, as I mentioned, of doing this here in Homewood as well as Madison with the plan commission. And, uh, the advantage of that is to see how the village operates, the different villages, and, uh, how they approached us during the heyday in the nineteen seventies and eighties, we were meeting twice a week, four weeks a month, we were paid, employees, volunteer employees. So it was quite an event at the time. And then we were individually sued by, uh, developers during that timeframe. And what I brought out of that and carried throughout, and I'm sure I'm a pain with some of the details, the clarifications that I asked for, but that when you have to justify what you said in a meeting, the minutes that are taken, and you correct the minutes, that record has to be accurate. It's what you stated, it's what you said, it's how you responded, and, uh, it may come back to bite you. So the one thing that I took away from that experience is when we have, uh, an applicant, uh, a, a case, I check everything on the case to make sure that it is right before we pass approval of it.
Excellent, and we'll get into more of that commissioner responsibilities, I'll zip through the first half, but we have a attorney here, I'm not an attorney, so, uh, um, they get paid by the hour. By the minute, so, um, but, you know, a lot of experience, and even if you're the, the newbie, uh, you've, you've been to enough planning and zoning meetings to, to, to understand some of this stuff, uh, I think you guys, set it fast yourself, what the role of mission is, I heard, uh, so many different perspectives, and, um, I think you, you get that, we don't need to tell you that. You know, our, our elected officials, I'll defer to David, what's the role of the elected officials?
Well, you have the pleasure of actually doing the hard work on petitions. And you go through the public hearing process, sometimes it's one night, sometimes it can be many nights. I was involved in a process that took eighteen months, so, um, they vary, but you do the hard work, you flesh out all the details of the project, um, you hold the petitioner who's before you to the standards that are set out of the zo- uh, zoning ordinance for whatever relief they're seeking, variation, special use permit, whatever it is. Um, and then you give a report to your, uh, board of trustees. And the board of trustees, because zoning is a legislative act in Illinois, um, the board of trustees then decides whether to accept your recommendation to them, um, modify your recommendation to them, or reject your recommendation. But they vote on an ordinance that grants the relief or denies the relief, as the case may be, if the ordinance is voted down, uh, that the petitioner spent a lot of time before you preparing for and, uh, explaining why their, their project, uh, meets the standards of your code. There, the plan is said, they're the final, uh, authority on land use matters. Um, they are also, um, they'll look to you for some policy direction with the comprehensive plan. Um, you might get a directive from the board to, you know, this part of the community seems to not be developing in the way we want, we'd like you to look at it so they can direct policy to you. You then can hold a public hearing for a complete amendment or a whole new comprehensive plan, we'll get into that a little bit. And of course, uh, the mayor with the advice and consent of the board of trustees appoints you as officers of the village, um, to be plan commissioners, planning and zoning commissioners, as the case may be.
Yeah, and I think that top line, also that non-land use responsibility, being in that planning and zoning chair, they're not asked to, you know, vote on twelve different points of a, a specially used permit. Um, so, um, I think, you know, sometimes they're, they look at things through a, a different policy lens. Uh, and it's just a different responsibility, obviously, as you know, than, uh, what the plan commission has before you. Uh, your planner and your staff, I don't have to tell you this, but I'll put it on the record that you have one of the best, she's widely respected about planning and economic development, um, and, uh, you know, you're in good hands, um, with this. I was peeking at the, uh, at the agenda package for some recent, uh, properties and I, I was really impressed with what, what you do. So I don't think I need to say too much about that, you understand, uh, the, the importance that Angela and Noel brings to this, uh, bring to this commission. These are good, you have good staffers, please. Um, obviously in every community, there's different board, we have a couple of, uh, members of the parents review board here, you know, there's some overlap. Uh, in Lamont where I work, they have a historic preservation commission, I've been on a historic preservation commission in the past as well, so, um, you know, every community has a, you know, their own sort of unique mix, depending on, you know, the needs of their, their local government and their, you know, policies and desires for economic development. Got our attorney here, uh, and, um, again, I think you guys did a really good job of explaining why you're here and that sort of understanding that role with, uh, you know, working with, with the public. And it sounds like you have a pretty clear understanding of what the developer is here to do, right? Like, many communities, we're dealing with many jurisdictions, I don't know how many are in Homewood, but in lots of places, there's lots. Uh, that could be tricky in some of these roles, uh, especially when working with the public, if there's a different, um, park district, school district, library board, et cetera, um, sometimes everything just is the government, the, the village. And, um, you know, we have a sort of a complex system of local governments in, uh, Illinois and Cook County, but, uh, here's just a few of them to keep in mind.
Let's go to the previous, I just don't want it, cause I think it's a good one.
Okay, I mean, this is, this is for everyone, but, and I, I, you intuitively know this, the developer comes before you. You know, and we're talking about like, maybe a more involved planning unit development, but even a homeowner who's seeking, uh, variation for, a slight variation for an addition to their house, or whatever the case may be. They spend a lot of time and effort, and you have a, you have a right to expect them to spend a lot of time and effort to explain their case to you and why it meets the standards of your code. And we'll get into standards more in a minute, but you'll hear me say a lot about that. Um, but they realize that, at least this, at least developers who've done this a lot, realize that they might come before you and not get a favorable recommendation from you. Um, but that's a cost of doing business from their perspective, but it is important to remember that they're here to make their case to you, and you have a right to expect, no matter how complicated the cases or how simple the case is, that that person, that developer has done, uh, their homework, understands what they need to, uh, uh, show to you to get a positive recommendation. Um, but again, they realize too that they may not get that, so.
That's fine. Of course, our planning, it happens regionally, we've heard about that beautiful red line extension and, and the like. Um, so all of you should be familiar with the Chicago Metropolitan Agency for Planning, organizations like Chaddick Institute at DePaul University that are, are advising communities like yours and, and, you know, professional staff and elected officials, um, a- about, uh, planning matters that, you know, make, make cross borders and the like. And you are walking in the footsteps of a long history, a little bit of tidbit here. Nineteen oh seven, the heady year of nineteen oh seven, when Hartford, Connecticut decided that they would establish a planning commission, um, so, um, you have decades and decades of, of cases and the like, uh, behind you, uh, to rely on. And then the last plug before I turn it back over to, to David to talk about commissioner responsibilities is our local chapter, APA, the American Planning Association, Illinois chapter. We're here because we're both members and volunteers of this pro bono committee that comes out and does commissioner training, so. Couple of months ago, we were in Darien and before that I was in Oak, um, oh, Orland Park and the like, so, um, it's a great organization, the annual conference offers a plan commissioner training, so if this is something you want even more of, um, you could head to one of their conferences, where's the next one? It'll be around, um, but yes, you could go to illinoisapa.org membership and it is only fifty bucks if you want to get the benefits of being a member as a plan commissioner. I'll let you.
Yeah.
Cruise into the responsibility.
Well, we've already touched on some of this, and as Jason said, I think each of you did a really good job about understanding your role as a plan commissioner for Homewood. Um, and how you approach that position, and I thought, I thought each of you did a great job discussing that. We've already talked about the elected officials, their role is distinct from yours, again, zoning is a legislative, uh, act in Illinois, so they have the final decision. One thing I did neglect to say when I said they could accept your, uh, recommendation, modify your recommendation or reject your recommendation, they could also send something back to you if they want to, for further hearing on some issue that may have been, uh, contentious, uh, in the public hearing process. Um, we've talked about staff, as Jason said, you have very good staff. Um, and I've known Angela for years, I, I knew her when she was at Lagrange, so she's been doing this a good long time. Um, public, obviously you hold public hearings, uh, you also have public meetings, and we'll get into that distinction in a little bit. But you're here. But you're here to listen to their concerns. About a petition. Uh, or their support for a petition, but if we're being honest, who usually comes to your meetings? The people who have an objection to a petition. Um, some developers are good at getting like the Chamber of Commerce or other people who would just naturally support. Their type of project, but that is more rare. Um. I'm mystified by that, especially when we know something's going to be contentious, but you're here to collect their concerns, and a lot of times. Their concerns aren't going to be technical in nature. They're going to be very opinionated. Uh, but you have to consider that and consider its relevancy to the standards that you have to consider for the relief. Um, and then we've already talked about the developer. Ideally, the developer will get out of the uh public hearing process as cleanly as possible, as quickly as possible, because. A lot of times, depending on the scope of the project, they have financing that's already running on the project, and they're already incurring uh interest uh costs. And carry costs with the land and whatnot, so they'd like to get out of this. Um, as effectively and efficiently as possible. And again, as I said. Depending on the nature of the developer, how how sophisticated they are, how many projects they have done. They're prepared for a no, and they'll take their chances at um um the uh board of trustees. Okay, so like we said, there are breaks for questions. Uh, since we haven't had any yet, do we have any right now? Very none, we will continue. Okay. So this section will talk about the specific responsibilities of commission members. Um. So, as I said, you have a right to expect anyone who comes before you to be well prepared to explain why their project. No matter how big, how small, whatever it is, um, they, you have a right to expect them to be prepared. But they also have a right to expect you to be prepared and to ask the questions that will flesh out the information necessary. To get to a recommendation. Even if that's a no recommendation, a recommendation. Um, so. You, as Jason said, your staff does a really good job with the reports. You get a lot of good information. It seems like it it covers everything you need to know, but you should read that. Be familiar with it. Um, in some instances, you know, you may already be familiar with the property in question. It could be your neighbor. Or it could just be um a lot that's you know has been sub- uh targeted for a development opportunity site by the village. Um, whatever it is, um, you can certainly visit the site. Um, but when I say visit the site, I mean from a public way. Not walking onto the property, because actually that becomes a trespass issue. Um, however, um, some property owners may let you on. The thing you need to avoid is having a substantive conversation in that instance. Have you guys ever really visited sites? It happens from time to time? Okay, good. If you do, it's best not to engage the property owner or the petitioner if they might not own the property, but they have a contractual interest in the property. Because that conversation should be reserved here. We'll get to ex parte communications in a little bit. Um, you should understand the proposal and how your zoning code applies to that proposal, and you should be prepared with. Questions. Again, you staff um for the purpose of, you know, if you have questions on what um. Um, the petitioner is seeking or some aspect of the project, staff can help you with that. Um. You know, some of this is basic play of active role attendance is always very important. Um, you know, I don't need to go through these, but you know, act professionally, right? Um, you want the petitioners, you want the public to act professionally, you you set that example for them. Um. Be respectful, listen attentively, um, and consider the merits of the project and how it relates to the code and the complex. Um, we've talked about this. Um. Avoid jargon. As an attorney, I can appreciate that, but planners have their own uh language too. Um, and as an attorney who works with a lot of planners, I can tell you it can be kind of frustrating, but that doesn't mean ours language is any better. Anyway, avoid jargon. Um. Don't assume that they know the community like you know the community. Um, some of your petitioners. May have only a brand new interest in Homewood, so. I've been to meetings where there's an assumption being made on one side or the other that everyone understands what this is about and why this property is good or bad for a project. So don't assume that. So be patient, be courteous. Remain calm and model the behavior you expect the public, the petitioner to uh use in your meetings. Um. Generally, each of you, except for the uh the two of you at the end here, uh, but you've been on long enough. Uh, but those of you who've been out here a long time, I'm sure you're very familiar with Robert's Rules of Order, at least a general understanding. Trust me, the six hundred pages of Robert's Rules of Order, you're only scratching the the very surface of those. You don't get into the depths of that. Um. We talk about whether Robert's rules is appropriate or whether we can get with something else, but yeah, it's a good way to just structure your the proceedings of your meetings. To reach a logical decision that everyone understands and how you got there. Um. And like I said, you're you're not, you're not getting into the depths of Robert's rules of order. There's some esoteric details of parliamentary procedure you don't need to worry about. Um. So when you're particularly in the case of a variation or a special use permit or a planned development. Um, you know, consider conditions to mitigate the external impacts of the project on other properties around it. That's what you have to, uh, if if you're considering conditions and staff may may recommend conditions, but you might think about those conditions and either add to them or modify the the recommended conditions. But that's one of the uh important roles that you play, like. Okay, there's merit to this project, but I can see how it could affect the neighbor neighboring properties. What can we do to minimize that to allow the project to proceed while ensuring that neighboring property owners have the use and enjoyment of their property? Um. Try to avoid debates, hear the public questions, uh, gather all the information, then maybe comment to it later. We'll get into a little bit of the structure of a meeting. Um, which may or may not fully align with how you do a meeting, but it's just a model that we present. Um. Obtain all the information, make sure you get all your questions out. And if necessary, and you don't feel like you've uh. Been provided satisfactory information to help you make an informed recommendation, you can continue the hearing to another date. And that does happen. Like I said, I was involved with an eighteen month one. Okay. So standards, I've already talked a bit about standards. I think you know what the standards are. Um. The standards are there, frankly, to constrain your authority. You don't have unlimited authority. So the standards are designed to help you think about the project in a very particular way. And the information you're eliciting from a petitioner and from the public even. Should relate to those standards. And again, the public will come here, and it's usually the people who are not necessarily in favor of the project or have a concern for the project. They may not be opposed to the project, but they might have some valid concerns because they may be a neighboring property owner. Or they anticipate that the property, uh, the the project will have some negative effect on their property, even if it's if it's a few doors down or whatever. Um, but a lot of their, a lot of what you're going to get from the public as opposed to the petitioner is opinions. On what the merits of a project. And in that eighteen month um public hearing, I have referred to a few times, it happened in Lyle. It had to do with the relocation in Navistar to the Lucid Technology Building on eighty-eight. Um, that got gummed up for eighteen months by eight property owners who were in the vicinity of the Lucid Technology Building. But one of the things that kept coming up was stormwater issues. You know, I knew the site was already engineered. Uh, fully, uh, uh, you know, all the stormwater issues had been well vetted many years before. All the systems still worked very well, regardless. Kept hearing comments about that, and we'll get into repetitive comments at a meeting, but um. One of. One individual in particular happened to be taking a fairly aggressive stance with the commissioners and accusing them of being in cahoots with Navistar and making all sorts of statements. Uh, that were unfounded and there was no evidence for them. Um, one of the plan commissioners happens to be a stormwater engineer. Well, she's a civil engineer, but she specializes in stormwater work. So anyway. The petition, uh, the the member of the public who was uh asking very aggressive questions and making these accusations. Said, well, I know more about stormwater than you, and so the one commissioner said, oh, really? Are you a stormwater engineer? No, but I know about stormwater because I see how water goes across land. Oh, well, I happen to be a stormwater engineer. Did you know that? Oh, no, I didn't know that. I've looked at all the data that's been provided by Navistar for this site. I can assure you, your property is fully protected. It did shut this person down, and I'm not relating exactly how that exchange went. It was a little bit different. It was a little bit more colorful than that, uh, but the point is. That, you know, you're going to get people who come here with a lot of opinions. And it doesn't mean that it's wrong, and they're very concerned about their property rights, right? This is why we hold a public hearing. This is the due process element. Of ensuring that people's property rights are protected, both the developer and those whose properties surround the developed site. And sometimes it becomes um um, it's a eureka moment, I will say, for the public. When they realize that the public hearing is actually for the benefit of the developer and them. It's not just them, and we've had those instances where. You will get into cross examination in a minute. You can cross examine witnesses in a public hearing. It doesn't go like you would think in a court setting. Uh, it's a lot less formal than that, but still. We had people who were cross examining Navistar's experts, and there were a lot of them. Um, but when they wanted to cross examine. The public, they were surprised. They said, they can't do that to us, and we're like, yeah, actually they can. Because you've made a lot of assertions, and they they need to understand how that, why that assertion was relevant. Anyway, this is goes to what I'm saying about. Making sure what you do is filtered through the standards to constrain. Again, you don't have unlimited discretion. You don't have unlimited authority. The standards are there to help you think about a project in a very particular way. And elicit information from the petitioner and the public that's relevant to those standards. Um, okay. Enough of that. Um, items that are not reviewed by the commission, um, this is usually gonna, it. I doubt you'll, it's sometimes people veer into it, but you know, there's course correction that happens, building code issues, that is post the entire hearing process. Property maintenance issues, private security, financing. Um, really not an issue, and um there may be standards that you're familiar with that talk about the highest and best use of a property. Um, I have a new opinion that that has no place in what you do. Um. What else? Interior design, business operations, those are not things that concern you. You are concerned about how the project is situated on a property. What the impacts of that project may be on surrounding properties. How do you deal with those issues? And what conditions would be appropriate and constitutional? Um, the chair, the chair, um. Most plan commissions are as good as their chair, frankly. Um, if you have a weak chair, um, the commission can frequently break down in its process, especially in complex matters. If you have a strong chair, completely the opposite experience. Doesn't mean that they have to be authoritarian in their approach, but just structuring a meeting, ensuring that it's moving along, giving everyone an opportunity to be heard. Um, um, tailoring testimony where appropriate so that it gets to the standards that you need. Um, managing repetitive testimony that might be before you, you know, you don't need to hear about traffic fifteen times. Okay, we know traffic's an issue. So the a good, a chair recognizing that this is a concern, say, okay. We know that traffic's a concern. We've already heard it from some of your neighbors. Do you have anything else? And that's how you can deal with that issue. Um, ensuring, however, that all parties have a reasonable input into the process. Focus the discussion on the topic at hand, expedite actions as much as possible and get to a vote. And make your recommendation. So this is what I was talking about. And this may mirror how you do your meetings. This is, there's variables to this, but typically, um, what we have is before the public hearings are open. Some chairs like to describe the rules of the public hearing, and some communities have very detailed rules of procedure for their plan commission. After the eighteen month hearing process in Lyle, we did those. We did a pretty detailed uh approach to rules for future public hearings. At the opening of the public hearing, the the chair or perhaps staff. Will give a report on the uh petition that's before you, and you can see that staff is right there. Then the petitioner has their opportunity to present. Public then testifies. Typically, what we recommend is that the public's questions be directed to you, and you can redirect it back to the petitioner. And if the petitioner has an attorney, the attorney will oftentimes want to kind of manage that process if they have some other experts. Landscape architects, engineers, whatever. Some questions are better suited to other uh professionals than others.
And that and that should be part of the rule. If you're going to institute that, that should be part of the rules that you state before you begin.
Yeah, exactly. Um. You can certainly ask questions during the process, but there's also a structure to doing that. Sometimes you'll wait. For your questions, you you want to get everything out on the table. It just depends. Um. You, some communities will close the public hearing when the petitioners finish with their presentation, all the questions and all the um uh testimonies been offered by not only their witnesses, but by the public. Some communities then close the public hearing at that point and then move the conversation to just the commission. I don't know if that's how you do it, but that's not unusual. Um, it is a really actually a good way to structure and manage your meetings. Um, whether the chair restates the request at the end is, I don't think that's important, and then you vote based on the standards and your vote. Some communities, uh, Round Lake Beach is one example of this. They actually have worksheets that they work from. Where all of the standards are in the worksheet. So if the petitioner before them is seeking a special use permit with variations, they'll have the worksheets. And the worksheets have the standards. The chair um will go commissioner by commissioner and give their opinion on whether they met the standards. If they didn't, why didn't they? Do they have any thoughts about conditions that may be helpful? And then that becomes the formal report that's given to the board of trustees. Um. Round Lake Beach is one example of that. There's other examples of it, but they, uh, in my experience, they do it among the best. Um. Yeah, taking testimony, this is why we're here. Um, ensure that everyone has the right to speak. Again, you don't have to listen to traffic fifteen times. Um, you can set reasonable limits on time. Um, three minutes seems to be where the courts are okay. Less than that might get you in some issues. Um, weigh the relevance of testimony. Again, people will come here with a lot of opinions about a project, but whether it's relevant to what you need to consider. Is another thing altogether. And some chairs try to be helpful to people who come with strong opinions by saying, you know, look, I I appreciate your opinion, but that's not really relevant to what we need to think about here. Here's maybe how you make, do you have any thoughts about this? They can prompt them that way if they want to. That doesn't happen often, but. If someone comes with strong opinions and you want to help them tailor what they're sharing with you, that might be a way to do it. Consider all the testimony, all the relevant testimony in your voting. Again, there's going to be a lot of uh testimony that may not be relevant at all. And again. Who comes to your meetings? The objectors are usually the ones who come to your meetings. That's just, that's universal. That's universal across the country, I assure you. It's not unique to anywhere. Um. But that's, that's fine. That's why we're here. Um, but the number against the project, or in the rare instance that there's more for the project. Um, is not a valid criteria. You're not calling balls and strikes. Okay, we've talked about some of this. I'm not going to go over it again. All right. You wanna?
All right, we'll do fine use of that.
Okay. So this is, this is from my perspective, of course, as the lawyer in the room. Um, well, I know there's lawyers there, but from my perspective, as someone who works with a lot of playing commissions and zoning boards. This is, this is really important. All right, so the findings and. You have like, for instance, for a special use permit, you have like twelve standards that a petitioner needs to present, you know, uh. Give you testimony that's relevant, and they may not meet on twelve, by the way, and we'll get to that in a minute. Um, and then variations, uh, you have. Um, so you have a lot, you have standards, and that helped, that's actually not bad for a uh applicant, because then they can kind of tailor their presentation. In a number of different ways to address a number of aspects of their um. Uh, project, but the standards are there to help uh ensure a fair. Decision. Doesn't mean it has to be uniform from project to project. You you are not a precedent setting body. Every property is unique. Every project's unique. Even two pro- even two uh properties that are right next door to each other, same exact project. The project may be perfect for one property. It may not make sense on another property. And it could be as simple as because the sunlight shines a certain way on that property versus the other one. The angle is sharper on one and not on the other, whatever it is. The angle is sharper on one and not on the other, whatever it is. Um. You are, as a plan commission, and I realize you're a, a, a joint board, um, but plan commission first and foremost is created for the purposes of creating a comprehensive plan. What happens is, under Illinois law, the statutes. The plan commission actually comes out of the planning authority that municipalities have, and really the plan commission is only statutorily required to do the plan or an amendment to the plan. Um, and hold that public hearing. So you are the guardians of the plan, if you wanna look at it that way. And so it's very important with your decisions, and when you're eliciting information from a petitioner to see where a project is consistent with the plan. And if you're concerned that it's not consistent with the plan, and you catch this before the public hearing even starts. It is good to talk to, uh, staff to kind of get a maybe a finer understanding of why this project is proceeding. As if you're familiar with comp plans, they're typically written in fairly broad terms. To just kind of give a general idea of the desired development patterns in a community and how we're gonna get there and the values of the community, because it is a values document. Like your municipal budget, it is the values of the community. Your budget is a values document. It's what your priorities are. Um, I've said it already, I'll say it again, evidence must meet the standards. Um, refer to the standards when voting. You know, some communities are, do this differently. I don't wanna say they're better or worse. Um, you know, Round Lake Beach might set one extreme, others, you know, do it a different way. Uh, but, um, it is essential that you make the findings relevant to the standards that you need to consider. Because if your attorneys have to defend an action, while it's not necessarily gonna be because of anything you do, because you're advisory, you, you're a recommending body. Except in a very limited instance. Um, you know, you're gonna help bolster the village's case in litigation by the better job that you do eliciting the information to support the recommendation that's made, that I, I would assume is most of the time carried out by the board. Uh, there may have been differences in the past. I'm not completely familiar with the history here, but generally the board and the plan commission zoning board should be fairly aligned on what the objectives are of the community. And being able to provide recommendations to the board that are well-founded is very important. Um. Again, I already said, you don't set precedent. Um, you consider each proposal on its merits, even if it's the same project on two different properties right next to each other. Okay, um. The way that Illinois is actually kind of a leader in this, and it's from this case that's up here from nineteen fifty-seven. This case, LaSalle National Bank, the Cook County, uh, first had to say, yes, zoning is constitutional. We established that many years before, thirty years before uh, in the Ambular Realty case. Um, however, zoning cannot just be arbitrary and capricious. It has to be tied to something, the standards. Uh, again, you don't operate with unlimited discretion, and for the attorneys in the room, it comes out of your Tenth Amendment police powers zoning. And that was, that was discussed in the Ambular Realty case and its other cases that actually predated it. Um. Health, safety, I don't do morals anymore. Um, that's such a squishy word in so many ways, but to promote the health, safety and general welfare of the public. Um. The LaSalle factors then were announced by the Illinois Supreme Court as a way for courts to review on, on what's known as de novo review zoning decisions. What de novo review basically means is if you get up to the circuit court on a zoning dispute outside a very limited context, it's basically a whole new game. Um, you can have new experts, you can have additional experts. It, it be, it becomes a trial. And whether that case, and we're talking obviously in the case where the petitioner has been aggrieved. Um, or you do have the instance where neighboring property owners may be upset by the decision. And there are rights under Illinois law for them to bring a case to. But at the end of the day, what the Supreme Court gave us in nineteen fifty-seven and that's used to this day is a series of things known as the LaSalle factors to analyze the decision, uh, to analyze the petition and the merits of the petition in the context of that new review, that new public hearing that actually happens in a trial court. So there's your it's actually thirty-one years before LaSalle, but I don't need to get into that, but that's, that's where the United States Supreme Court said, yes, you can, you can zone. Okay, special conditional uses, they are the same thing, um. They are specifically listed in your use tables, um, so you'll most of them say P for permitted by right, S or C as a special use. They possess unique characteristics that are the project is generally considered good for the zone it's in. But there's some aspects to it that just might warrant additional considerations before making a decision whether it should be allowed, and that's what triggers the public hearing process. And again, the special use is designed to mitigate impacts of a use upon neighboring property owners and facilities. All right, you know, one of the things that's, uh, I don't remember, but in the list, there's usually something about adequate public facilities or utilities or whatever, um, as one of the conditions or, um, one of these standards. Um, also mitigate the impact of use on environmentally sensitive areas. That as much as anything comes out of plan developments, plan developments in Illinois are a specific type of special use. Um, some communities actually map them, so you not only have to get a special use permit, but you also need a map amendment. Evanston is an example of that. It's, it tends to be in bigger cities where this happens. We represent Moline. Moline also maps their, uh, plan developments, but they're also special uses. Um, and then is the, this is an interesting one. Consider the public need for the particular use of the particular location. The easiest way to explain this one, because some of these can be mystifying, I, I suppose. Um, how many? Let's use a, let's use a very, uh, uh, controversial, how many vape shops do you need on a row? You know, if you already have three vape shops within like, you know, in a three-block area, do you need another? Is it necessary? Does it promote the public convenience? Does it, does it fill in unneeded use in your community? So that's, that's where they're. Okay. Yeah, but I mean, there's a lot. Um, okay, I'm not gonna go through these only because you. Here's what I am gonna say about. When you have a petitioner come before you, and this is true of any zoning relief and the standards you need to consider. Their project may, may not meet any more than one of the standards you have listed, and that's okay. That can still result in a positive recommendation. Many of the standards may not be relevant to their project at all. Um, and they're committing a number of reasons for that. Maybe they hit eight of the twelve. But they hit some stronger than other and they're weaker on others. But maybe the three that they're really strong on are all that really concerns you about this project at this location and how it may impact surrounding properties. So as I said before, no matter how many people are in the room, if all of them are mad about a project and there's just the petitioner supporting his or her project. It doesn't matter. You're not calling balls and strikes that way. The same goes with the standard. Some standards may just be so important at that location that so long as the petitioner knocks that one out of the park for you and you're satisfied. The other ones don't necessarily have a bearing in your ultimate recommendation. And if, you know, if it's just one because of a combination of some aren't relevant at all, or some aren't as important as others in that location. Then that's fine. That's a basis for your recommendation, uh, to make a positive recommendation. Uh, conversely, it could be the basis for a negative recommendation for all, you know, the different. So just think about the standards in that way. Variations, the same thing. Variations are actually the oldest form of zoning relief. Um. So there's a long history to variations, but when zoning first became, uh, popular as a, a way to control development in communities. Um, it was recognized that people needed a, a relief from the strict application of the code to the property. That's what a variation is for. Some communities will restrict the types of variations that a petitioner can, can get. Some communities set up a two-tiered system of variations where there's administrative variations that if the administrate, if the, if the requested variation doesn't exceed a certain percentage threshold to reduce a side yard or whatever it is, then that can be handled administratively and never come to you. Anything above that does come to you, but the, the wording of variations is, is specific to what I'm talking about. So the variation may be granted when carrying out the strict letter of the code will create a practical difficulty or particular hardship. That is language from the earliest days of zoning and from something known as the Standard State Zoning Enabling Act. Which set the model zoning code that most communities started with. Um, we've evolved from it in many ways, although Illinois is one of the states that has not really evolved from it, and there's, uh, disagreement as to whether it should. Regardless, this was a model document that was created by the, uh, United States Commerce Department for communities to help them have, um, uh, create a zoning code for themselves and also promote residential development. Um, Herbert Hoover was the Commerce Secretary who, um, our future, the later president, he was the one who came up with the Standard State Zoning Enabling Act. He then came up with a companion document a year later called the Standard State uh, Planning Enabling Act, which then gave communities the ability to apply. Anyway, um. Again, I don't need to get into these, but that's the purpose of a variation. It's to recognize that as applied to this particular property. There is a practical difficulty or a particular hardship um, for the owner in being able to use their property as they desire. Now, that doesn't mean you have to give it to them. And they really have to show this. Uh, but in some of the things that come up are the physical surroundings or the unique shape or topographical features of the property. Um. You know, um. It pertains, that's an important, the, the variation pertains to the property, not the property owner. And that's why it doesn't matter what the owner thinks about the value of their property and how they can enhance the value of their property. What is the particular unique features of the property that are actually creating a hardship that's not letting them do something? And that's where, that's that analysis. Um. You can limit variation, I talked about this. So you can have limited variations, um, you may not wanna give a variation. You, you, your, your code can limit a variation to no more than a twenty-five percent reduction or increase in something. Whatever it is. Um. This last one, um, use variations. Use variations is another way to say a, a map amendment, a rezoning. Uh, but you're using the variation process instead of the amendment process to get there. We don't recommend it, although it is allowed under Illinois law. Okay, again, I'm not gonna get into it. But you will see the word hardship in here. I think you also have practical difficulty. Yeah. So your, your, y- your standards are more robust than what's laid out in the statute. And actually, Illinois statute lays out the, uh, the two hard, the hardship and practical difficulty standards, uh, that are adopted statewide. Okay. Uh, real quickly, refer to the standards when voting. Evidence must show standards are met. Again, doesn't have to be all of them. It doesn't have to be a majority of them. It could just be one of them. Um, request is considered on the merits. You're not a precedent-setting body. LaSalle factors come into play, um, when something goes to court, although amendments may mirror what's, what we call the LaSalle factors. Um. I don't need to get into the rest of this, but again, just remember the practical difficulty, particular hardship, and it's an analysis of the property. The other thing is, um, when we do special use permit, when we're asked to prepare the ordinance, um, we make it specific to the user, not the property, so it doesn't run with the law. The variation will run with the land, but the special use permit is unique to the, uh, petitioner. And once the petitioner goes away, so does, so does a special use permit. Okay, any questions?
Yeah, but it's several. Um, can you go back to slide twenty-six? This is items not reviewed by the commission?
Yeah.
Um, at, at the bottom, uh, second bullet, internal business operations. So I assume fair game would be number of people, business hours, general things like that, which are probably stating in their in, in their paperwork that they're filling out anyway, but where it gets a little sticky, especially when you have, um, you know, a salon for every five people in town, um. We ask things like about how they operate, um, like walk-ins versus appointment only. How are you going to manage that, et cetera, et cetera? Cause that can directly affect parking load and traffic and everything else.
Right.
Where, where, where does? No, that's talking about internal business operations become great.
Well, regardless, and what you're talking about is a very valid inquiry by the plan commission in a particular situation such as you're describing. Um. You know, what do you anticipate your customer vote to be during the day? Because we have limited parking facilities in this area of town. And we just need to understand what we might be dealing with down the road. That's, that's perfectly reasonable because it's an internal function of the business that impacts externally. That would be how I would think about that. If it's not an issue, I wouldn't even venture into that question. And if I, so if I was attending a public hearing where that came up and there was no relevancy to surrounding properties. I'd say that's just not even a relevant inquiry. Why don't you change your question?
Okay. Um. Further, in the middle of the slide, some items reviewed by elected officials, financing. Okay, I got some questions about that, because I got some samples. Where I'm curious if we wandered off the, the path here. Um. So speaking of economics and business plans, when is that appropriate, not appropriate? And, and my line of thinking is, in a planning case, that may be appropriate. In a zoning case, it's probably not appropriate.
It's not. It's not. I, that's at an inquiry you're gonna get into. The reason why that's up here. The reason why it's the elected officials is, is their tith financing that they're seeking. Other economic incentives. Uh, waiver of tap-on fees, whatever it is. That's not what you're gonna get involved with. That's not your purview.
Right, because we, because we've actually had cases where for some odd reason, business plans were attached materials and questions were asked about it.
Well, okay, and that.
Probably was somewhere we shouldn't have gone.
That's, you know, the path, the path to hell is paved with intentions, right? So that's like, the petitioner has provided a business plan so that you'll understand how that business operates at that location. That doesn't mean that that suddenly gives you carte blanche to start digging in and criticizing their, you know, their business plan, or whatever the case may be. Your, your inquiry is limited to what the standards are, and again, how does this use operate on this property in the external impacts, external impacts of that, uh, operation on neighboring property owners? So again, to go back to your first question. If there's a connection between the internal operations and external effects on neighboring properties completely legitimate inquiry. If there is none, not a legitimate inquiry. That's not that, it may become a problem down the road. And if it's a special use permit, you can certainly revisit it. We've had situations, I don't know if the village has done this, but we've had situations where a special use permit. Um, we, we knew that there were some unique aspects of the business, but we couldn't yet discern whether the conditions we were gonna place on a special use permit were gonna work as we think they were gonna work. So we put a timeline where they'd have to come back in six months or a year. And then we can review whether those conditions are actually doing what we thought they would do. You actually have that level of expression, um, to do those things. Um, so to the point. It may not be initially apparent that the internal operations have an external effect, but it may become apparent as that business hopefully is successful at that location, and suddenly parking is becoming a huge issue in that area because of their success. Then you could read this.
Yeah, I get two more based on this topic, um. Voting. And, um, again, our tripping point here is salons. This is something about Homewood. I don't know. Must be on a chat or somewhere that verb suffered for slots, uh. Voting no due to economic oversaturation, oh, economic oversaturation. Where, where does that become?
Well, that's the, um.
It doesn't seem, I think that, that using that as a reason to vote no is some, uh, dangerous waters.
Yeah, I, I would agree, but the, it's the public convenience issue that I was talking about.
Well, yeah, you said it was the public need. Right, you had to take it. So where does public? Right, you had to take it. So where does public need? Uh here's become part of that or not?
Here's, okay, so as I said, you have three vape shops within a two or three block area. Another vape shop comes in and wants to locate in that same area. Um, you have, will that be detrimental to the economic welfare of the community? Well. In this instance, it could, because it's going to start taking customers away from existing businesses that we've actually had no issue with or whatever the case may be. So there's one. Will it be operated to promote the public health, safety and welfare? I mean, you know, how many salons do you actually need in a given area? If you have a particular part of town, or as you said, there's one salon for every five people in Homewood, you're oversaturated. And you might want to think about a zoning moratorium on salons, so you can get a handle on that situation. Um I assume that was talking to you. Okay, so it's one for every ten. Okay, you're still saturated on salons. So, you know, and then again, is it necessary for the public convenience that you're looking to me? I'm not seeing it, but I'm also reading it as I'm talking. So you do have the ability to consider these things, um. You know, without the special use, could the property, uh will the property be substantially diminished in value? I mean, you do have economic things. But those are to consider again. If it's a use that's so prevalent in the community like salons, I mean, you know. We have a lot of salons here, and in fact, we have a lot of fabulous salons that we want to help be, you know, successful. It shouldn't be the driving motivator. There's a lot of other things that should you should take into consideration like I'm talking about, but I can't tell you. That zoning is not part of your economic development strategy. Your zoning code is actually a very important part of your. Strategy, and I think Jason and Angela can speak to that as well as anyone. Depending on how hard the process is for your community to get, you know, uh a development approved, that could be a negative. But, you know, as we're saying, you know, is it necessary for the public convenience? Do we have any salons within a two mile radius of this location? No, we don't. Okay, well, let's, you know, maybe that makes sense, you know.
And and I've always tried to look at them as what is this, what is this one offering that the others don't? And is that a good enough reason to say, okay, that's especially like some, some give like. Treat uh help for people who are going through cancer with wigs and whatnot, so um. But but just purely for oversaturation, I mean, we're kind of at that point, so I guess you have to kind of frame it as. It. It doesn't meet the standard because there's no more public need here. Um final question related to this stuff that you've already shown. Um you you kind of said that we should be framing our vote. Within the standards or 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 tying them to the standard, should we be framing our questions to the standard? So in other words.
Absolutely.
So so I should I should go back to the twelve standards and where I have questions, I can take, I'm looking at this standard. Here's my question, how, you know, and 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 frame your question to um, does this? Explain to me how this, your answer here is going to meet the standard.
The the way, yeah, so the way that comes out in the setting that we're tired in a public hearing. Is, you know, we we have a certain set of standards that we have to be satisfied or met by your project. I'm looking at this one standard, da 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 da. Nothing you've told me relates to that standard whatsoever, and given where this property is, the unique characteristics of the property. I think that's a very important standard and I need you to address it.
That's perfectly reasonable, alright.
If it's not important, like I said. Irrelevant to the use on a particular occasion, then don't worry about it.
Anybody else?
I do. I'm sort of building on what Seth asked here, um and I'm not. I want to preface what I'm saying uh with with the emphatic, I'm not complaining about anything or. Whatever, but quite often, um and it's been a pattern for years that I have noticed. Property owner will. In my opinion, leave his um tenant kind of hanging out to dry uh and to make the um. Petition on their own for a special use permit, I mean, very typical. Um but the point is, um. Immediately when it comes to um. Consideration of, let's say, the economics or economic factors, it's it's often. Um either subtly or explicitly stated, well, you know, this is the only um. This is the only prospective tenant I have for this space, so uh you know, if you don't approve it. And I'm certainly uh saying this for dramatic effect, if you don't approve it, we'll have the. The blight of a vacant storefront.
And and that has come up. It's in some way that.
Yeah, your thoughts on that.
Well. Not to sound overly harsh, not your problem. It's the property owners' problems. Um I'm quite certain that that's not the only use that's allowed in that district. There's probably a whole bunch. And that property owner needs to do a better job marketing their property. Cause that's that's a purely business related. Um situation for that landlord at that location, and they need to maybe think more critically about how they're marketing their building and how their buildings maintained. Uh there could be issues there, um and you, just because that's the landlord's view on things, doesn't mean you need to share that. I understand that this has been a hard property for you to lease. Uh we appreciate you trying, but unfortunately, because of X, Y and Z, this is not the appropriate use of this location.
So this question is, I can't say personally, but it's a consequence of my coming late. Uh so when you describe your involvement with Lyle, are you the village attorney?
We were at the time, we're now ready.
Okay, that just to clarify, okay, that sets the context, great, thank you.
Yeah, just just uh back to your your point about the standards and the question that Commissioner Cap just bought up. Was my question in part two. Frequently when you. Communities are different, obviously, uh and some communities, commercial real estate, so sells at a premium. Uh there are also communities where you might have a vacant strip mall. Uh and while they might not meet one of the twelve standards, um it the building's been empty for a while. Uh and so. It it is not that you can't take that into consideration. I think the problem for our board is that we. Sometimes, and we all do it, uh we 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 get away from the standards, that is, we make, we're looking at. The findings of fact. And we're asking, we're quizzing people about their business uh in in all kinds of ways and 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 frequently it is tied to. One of the standards indirectly, but I don't think they go directly to the standards. I think the staff does an excellent job and you've probably seen the packets that we get for the meetings. Where they lay out the standards and they they attempt as one with a brief. And say, this is what might fit, this is something for you to, so it makes our job a lot easier. But I think from that, it's important for us to be. Uh uh when we when we have that guidance to take it and 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 I think it narrows it it. One, it's good for the community, it's good for the petition petitioner, because they know exactly where we're going and what we're doing. And 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 so whether we want to leave the building vacant. Uh we have a justification for it and we don't have to spend all night going back and forth here and there, whether it meets one, as you said. One standard of twelve. I I do have a, or you finish, yeah. One of the things that uh came up, I think, can't remember which one. Was regarding testimony, and I want you to. Would like to get a couple of things clear on that, um. Yeah, taking testimony, it's slide twenty-eight. Right. Just a, just, yeah, just a point of clarification, when we're talking about testimony, we're talking about taking testimony of witnesses, you know?
Yeah, so everyone who's in the public area is technically a witness, be they the petitioner, be they the petitioner's experts, be they the public.
So so if a member of the public stands up, wants to comment generally about. An item. That is considered testimony.
And they should be sworn in? Yes, everyone should be sworn in in your public hearings, um. Some communities have moved away from it. I think it sets an important tone for what you're about to do, especially if it's a very complicated. Land use issue.
Well, we we've had, we've we've had complicated issues. We had the, we've we, we had an environment, we had a a a. Country club that was selling. Selling its land and and the building is full.
You know, the suburbs have an issue with this, because this isn't the only one that that's happening.
Yeah, but the but but the point is, is that there were lots of people who wanted to be heard. And and um and and there's no way to come up and swear each one of those people in. Right, exactly. And so if you're going to do it that way, then then you swear it in the position. But I had taken the position, and I think I told member Brian that, is wait a minute, if you're not giving testimony. If you haven't been sworn in. Then uh you don't need to be sworn in unless. Uh unless you are, i- if I if I stand up and I ask a question in the audience, right, am I, is that testimonial?
Yes, for the purposes of what we're talking about, yes.
We've had people asking just general questions, and we actually had somebody come and ask and question the petitioner, which I made a. Mental note of, like, don't ever let that happen again. It needs to go through us, and importantly, remember, we let that guy. Quite quiz the petitioner and they got testy. We should have shut that down.
And that's why the questions go through you. Now, the cross-examination situation is a little bit different, but the the. I don't know if you've actually had a lot with that, because it comes up every now and again, but not often.
So your your position is, is that if I if I'm in the back there, Jim's sitting, but I decide I want to ask a brief question. Procedure question, so I need to swear Jim in.
Yes, and if you do the mass swear it in at the beginning. Before you start, you know, if you've got like three public hearings and you're ready, you could just have everyone stand up, take the oath, and then. You can see, okay, were you sworn in? Yes, I was sworn, whatever. If they weren't sworn in, swear me.
Okay, and the swearing in is, is do I give my name, my address?
Actually, you can't ask for addresses anymore.
But we do, we we need to stop that.
You could ask them for it, just, oh, can you tell us where you live or where your business is located? You could ask that. Whether they want to tell you is that is not a block to them giving their testimony.
Right, exactly. And then the 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 uh I have one other question, um. The, I I think we were sort of talking about uh the gradations between. Um no, cross-examining. Uh witnesses or petitioners, um. In a community like ours, we have. Developers. Big projects, um but we also have everyday citizens who simply just want, they're not developers. Uh they want to make some adjustment on the property. I I just wanted to. Um um sort of touch on the notion of of. Cross-examining. And I think you 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 addressed the need to. If we're asking them questions, explain to them why we're asking, to some extent, that we're attempting to address a standard. Or concern derived from a standard. Uh so that we don't spend a lot of time, uh because you go back in the community. And the community says, boy, those people on that board are just bored. They're very difficult, cantankerous, uh I didn't understand what they were talking about, and I hear that, though. Sometimes.
Sure, they got questions arbitrary and subjective, but if you frame it to the standard.
Yeah, and I and I think, right, and and it also allows us to speed things up and stay focused, and I think, I think the fact that the staff. Gives us those packages with that information, um it's helpful, but 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 I I am concerned always about. Uh the crossing, cross-examining. Now, it's one thing for a developer who comes in with his attorney and and they're making an architect, they're they're. They're that that's a different matter. We've had to deal with that, and we've done, I think I've worked done an excellent job in those situations, but I'm. I'm concerned about the. The other kinds of things, and I think you you did a good job of touching on the fact that uh. Explaining your your rationale, the rationale for your question concerns uh us trying to. Adhere to certain standard to a standard as appropriate.
Again, sort of what uh we're talking about here, giving testimony and actually uh asking about. Addresses. Doesn't happen that often, but it has um occurred every once in a while, and then I've I've nature what I do. I run to other places and um at Plan Commission and public hearings and whatever where. Uh the meeting may be dominated by a rather vociferous person who. Is more of a, I'm going to say a, you know, a loud mouth and actually. Uh you know, pick a community, let's say Orleans Park, and this particular person has happens to live in Waterloo, Iowa. And um you know, I'm not suggesting that it's he's he or she is a paid um pro bono tour, but um. And I suppose the chairman could uh sort of control that, but my point is, how do you, how do you, how do you weigh? Um just with the tone of the meeting, if you have somebody who really uh is very outspoken in in a very dominating way. Yet has absolutely no connection to the community whatsoever.
Well, have you heard about First Amendment audits?
No.
Oh, okay. Yeah, so what you're doing, by the way, comes out of the first amendment to the Constitution.
Okay.
This is a due process area. Um it's it's comes out of the bill, but it's due process area designed to protect people's fifth amendment uh property rights. That's what you're doing.
Okay.
And to put it in the Constitution. There are people out there, though, that want to test how well communities are adhering to First Amendment free speech rights. And if you're holding a public hearing, it's open to the public, and even if the person lives a thousand miles away, you give them an opportunity to speak. And and they may be trying to rile up the crowd, they live a thousand miles away, and. You might ask them, you know, can you give us your address? I'm not going to give you my address, but here's what I have to say, and they have a right to do that. Um if they're so bold, they said, I'm from Waterloo, Iowa. Oh, interesting, please proceed. You gotta let, you gotta hear what they have to say, and then if they're being particularly provocative, they're trying to rile the. You know, the assembly of. Um I think it's perfectly reasonable to leave and say, just so we're clear, you live in Waterloo, Iowa, right? All right, just, in other words, whatever they're doing will have no bearing on your consideration because. It's such an attenuated thi- it's not even attenuated, there is no connection. They live a thousand miles away, well, maybe a thousand, but they live a long way away. Um. Yeah, they, so you you listen to it, you endure it, you give them their three minutes of fame and glory. Or whatever, however you decide to limit uh uh the testimony, um. And then I wouldn't even pay attention to it in your considerations now. But there are people who are going around the country, they're doing this in a number of different contexts. Um testing the First Amendment, the observation of First Amendment free speech rights, and they will be abusive, they will be obnoxious. Um and unfortunately, we just have to endure them.
Yeah, yeah, and and I'm sorry, sorry. With that, are the instances, and I think it's being pointed out earlier, where we have a member of the audience who comes in. And asks, start and ask questions that are unrelated to the standards or unrelated to the topic. And wants to talk, give them their three minutes of fame and do whatever, but but I think. And there are instances, and we're smarter, more to know those instances where it's stopped, it has nothing to do with the issue. It stopped. It has nothing to do with the issue, uh, and that's going to end, that, that, that should be terminated. We had a situation like that with the person who. A salon issue was once, so a few years back where a person that they were, they wanted to move a salon near theirs. And the person came in and, and wanted to know in detail what their financials were for a particular period. Business plan and, and I'm sitting there saying, wait a minute, I was new to the board. I'm saying, wait, you, you can't do that. I mean, what, what authority do you have to do that?
Yeah, right.
But I didn't have an answer right at the moment. Sort of caught me off guard, but I, I did ask the chair to. You know, to end it, but, but I think. On our end, it is the having the conversation, letting them have their. So we don't have a First Amendment audit, uh, situation, uh.
These, these honestly, the people who are doing this have become so obvious. You're just like, oh yeah, you're one of those.
Question about setting that time. So at the beginning of the meeting, obviously, we can ma- make that part of our. Announcement for the rules that you'll be given three minutes in the audience. Is it fair to say that? If, if, if your time has expired, it is fair that you, you can request an additional, additional three minutes. But we preserve the right to not acknowledge that or not say that.
Yes. Yes.
We have a very small crowd. Sometimes we get a big one, not very often.
If you've got like two or three people who really want to address you on a petition, I'd kind of give them a longer leash to work with. I mean, you know, but again. Make sure it's whatever they're asking is relevant to what you need to think about. And again, you can help prompt them, like, you know. Understand that that's a concern, but it's actually not really relevant to what we need to think about.
Or your three minutes was over a minute ago, I think we.
Right, and the other thing is when you have bigger crowds, um, sometimes there'll be specific interest groups in the community that are there. You can ask them to have a spokesman from the group so that you don't hear the same thing from all eighteen members.
But we, we handle that right well. Pretty good job. No, 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 I'm saying in general with the country club.
Yeah.
Situation, I thought Fred did a pretty good job. Keeping it, because we spelled it out. You're gonna have, right, exactly.
I should let you continue.
And again, like I said, certain things you're gonna hear over and over, and again, you only need to hear about traffic, depending on how. Many people are in Rome, you only need to hear about traffic through the time. Yeah, we know traffic is an issue, you got some windows. And most people are just like, no, you know, I just wanted to talk about traffic. Okay, thank you. If anything else comes up, you're more than welcome to try, come back up and address us. Keep it friendly, keep it open, accommodating.
Any, any suggestions for, and maybe it's something you're gonna cover. We frequently have meetings where we might have one agenda item that's a resident with the problem. Something that, in my personal opinion, you know, should take half an hour or less. Uh, ends up. With considerations of, and they're smart questions, they're good questions, but, uh. Not only considering the standards, but other issues. Any suggestions about how to keep those, those, uh. Smaller issues moving quickly, getting, making.
Well, I can't give you any great ideas, but I think each commissioner needed to evaluate for themselves, okay. This person's, let's just take a simple thing. They, they want to extend their patio out to feed. And because it's regulated in Arizona zoning code as a structure. You know, into the rear yard. It's not going to have any, you know, you have to just evaluate how important this is ultimately. Yes, they still need to meet the standards, but how much are you going to drill down into it? I think some things more, more of a drilling down into the details of. I guess that's the best thing I could say, but that's, that's an evaluation each commissioner needs to make on their.
I have a question in a different direction. We have apparently twelve special use standards in about ten variants. I don't know the genesis of these. I don't know the origin of them. I don't know if they are the same standards used in other municipalities. Um, I don't know. The wording of them. Should they? How would we go about evaluating these standards to better shape the considerations? That need to be. For every case and to expedite the process to streamline.
So yes, the standards are part of your zoning ordinance. So if you're gonna do, if you're gonna like consolidate them, because maybe they seem repetitive in some ways. Um, and honestly, when you start getting beyond seven or eight, you're probably going to get some repetitive aspects to the standards. Um, you can actually initiate, you, you do have. You should look at it in your zoning code and staff can actually address this better than I can, but some commissions do have the authority to initiate, uh, text amendments. To deal with things like this. Um, where, you know, do we really need these two standards? At least two of them seem repetitive. Maybe we can consolidate them. Kind of make it a more streamlined assessment, you know. That's a fair question.
I know this only phone up fairly. January of twenty twenty-three.
Okay.
Uh, and I would just say if somebody is a practicing planner, like, you know, these aren't ever actually stone. And sometimes you're now a year and a half into the zoning update, you go that it, it might be. You have enough cases under your belt where you might, might warrant looking at it again. I'm not trying to give you guys more work, so. Because of the new zoning code, you're in a good spot, actually, to ask those kind of questions.
Actually, we, we, we did do that. We, we value, as a matter of fact, that was one of the, one of the first things we did.
Were they carryovers?
Some, some, yeah, some, some, some work.
Yeah.
But we made sure that they were tied to the code.
Yeah, I mean, it just might be another.
Yeah, no, that's a really good point. Uh, you know, you get comfortable with things, so when we're doing rewrites of zoning codes. Um, one of the thing that we do in the, the administration and enforcement section, which is where these are typically located. Um, that, that section always requires a lot of work because. The community is used to doing things a certain way, will come in and make recommendations on best practices and how to better streamline the process. Um, lead to more consistent results. It doesn't mean consistent yeses or no's. It just means more consistent approaches to projects, things like that. So one of the things that certainly comes into play are the standards.
Yeah.
And I, these standards to, um, Commissioner O'Brien's point, they're, they're unique to you. Um, some communities only have five special uses. Um, some communities only have two for variations. The practical difficulty and hardship standards are the only things they care about. It just depends on the community. Um, you have more, um, it seems like they probably, they may have been some carryover. Um, so that is something that we encounter when we're doing these, though, so we'll always say. Do these standards actually work for you guys in what you're trying to do? Or can we consolidate them? Because from our perspective, two and eight are very similar and really don't elicit any additional information that's going to be helpful to you. And that's how that conversation.
I, I think.
You're getting to my point. Now, the applicant is to. Respond. To both the variance and special use standards. Who else is to respond?
Well, you have to use them to guide your discussion and your assessment of the petition.
The application, right, the applicant.
Yeah.
Answers one through twelve, and that's included in your package, their answers.
Yeah, usually it's the petitioner who has to, I, sometimes staff will work with the petitioner on the responses to the standards. That you'll see written out in your reports.
Is it necessary or required for staff to respond to each of the questions after the applicant?
They're not witnesses. I want to make that very clear. Staff is not witnesses. Um, so their responsibility is to provide you with the information you need to help. Guide the discussion on the petition before you. You don't, you get sworn in?
No.
Okay. So, no, I mean, staff is constrained by the code like you are because, uh, but. They also are looking at a more holistic of, like, how does this development actually work with the comp plan? Which is, you do, you need to think about it too. And do they have that standard and incentives? Insistency with the comp plan? Yeah. Um. Staff was looking at it probably from a bunch of different policy directions that they understand are the concerns of the elected officials. So they might be looking at it from beyond zoning. They might be looking at some economic development aspects of it. And if, in, insofar as the applicant is looking for some incentives for the project. Be they municipally given incentives or Cook County given incentives, like a six B or an A C or whatever. Um, that brings in certain other considerations that are not really relevant to you. But on the pure zoning side. They, if staff doesn't follow the, uh, standards in terms of how they're interacting with, uh, the applicant. Because the applicant's first point of contact is going to be the person behind the counter. And that then initiates the process, and depending on the complexity of the process. They may get very involved in helping the petitioner with their entire application. But they understand that that application needs to address the standards and they'll help them with that. Or they'll tell them, you know, you're not, we know our commission pretty well. We know this is going to be a sticking point with this project. You need to figure out how you need, you need to adjust this project to meet the standard. So that all happens before it ever gets to you. Those conversations.
Let me, uh, get to the nub of it. In our packets that we receive for the various cases. And there will be a special use or a variance. And so, uh, this year so far, there've been four commissioners that have questioned the, um. Presentation of the minutes. And of the, of the packets in the sense that, um. Let's take a case that has a, a standard. And the applicant will fill out the standard. And we have their answers. Then there will be another set of three or four pages that we receive that are the staff answers to. Those standards, but those two standards are not the same. If you put them on a line going across, they'll be about the same. But words mean things. And so the answers to one may not necessarily be the answer to the other. They are worded differently. Secondly, it doubles the packet. It's a, it, it's, it's, there's gotta be a more, uh, efficient way of presenting standards. Be they variants or special use. For the applicant to answer. And personally, I don't necessarily need staff answered. Now, staff, if they're cautioning us or warning us, that could be done in a different way. But we don't have to have another three pages of similar standards. They're not exactly the same. And answers by the staff. For what reason? That's my question.
Well, okay. Some of this is applicants varying their sophistication and approach to their projects before you. Steph might feel that, you know, they gave it their best shot. They're, they're not, you know, they're not developers. They're just a simple homeowner who's looking for some relief from something. They did a, they did a bang up job as best they could with the standards, but let it, let's, let's illuminate some of the issues more. And that might be what drives that. I don't want to speak for Angela. Yeah, so I think that they're trying to be helpful and give a fuller picture than what the applicant might otherwise see. Because keep in mind, the applicant takes the application as told, okay, here's the application, here's, uh, if you have a checklist, here's the checklist. Please, you know. Uh, check off all the things that need to be, uh, done with the application, including writing out your responses to the standards. And the plan commission is going to need to consider when they, they hear your, when they hear. Yeah, well, whatever. Yeah, so that this point still remains. So they'll take it, they'll PDF it, and they'll put it into the electronic packet for you. Um, but it may be the case where, okay. The applicant did what we asked them to do, but they really didn't do anything that can really tell us much about the case they gave. Because to most people, I mean, and we talked about this, avoid jargon. Well, planning is completely jargon. I mean, it's, it's like any other discipline. It is in the language all of its own. And most people, zoning is, you know. It's often their first point of contact with government, um, and often they want it to be their last and only, uh, contact with government. But it's a language unto itself. These things don't, while I can sit here and make sense of all the, the words on this page. You can, each of you can, staff can, to the average homeowner, this is gobbledygook.
And we've seen, we've seen responses or obviously they misunderstood.
Yeah, right, exactly.
I think that David's point, like, you know, you're trying to eliminate something and. I would say, you know, for, for an applicant as well, especially a business owner, I don't need them to become an expert in zoning. We have experts in zoning and your development codes and the like.
That's good. But about the duplication, the literal duplication of the same questions and not maybe the same questions. Because there are two or three words different. And I, I just personally, I, I see it as a very, I don't know. Confusing. Process. I, we can, I would appreciate my staff in those situations, as you described. Enlightening, surprisingness of something that perhaps the applicant was not aware of. They want to expand on that particular comment, and that, that's good, but not literally go over every single standard.
I'm in the glorious position of saying, staff has heard your concern.
Actually, actually the exact opposite. Yeah, my, I feel the exact opposite. I think. For lots of, because it's what I do for a living. If, if I've got somebody who's gone over an application, has reviewed it. Has done all the preliminary work and has given me opinion, much like a law clerk might give me an opinion on a memorandum. Or lawyer, a young lawyer that I'm working with a memorandum on what he or she thinks the law is going to be. That's extremely helpful to me. I may not agree with him. And take a different position, but when, when it comes to me defending in court, a decision that the board here makes. That someone might argue might be arbitrary, precious for some reason, uh, that's going to be helpful. Uh, so I don't, I don't see it as a harm at all. I think it's a huge help.
Here's what I'm going to say to this. This is a very important conversation you need to have. I would highly recommend you carry that conversation to our future meeting because we do have a lot of information we still want to try to get to. Yeah, uh. Yeah, I'm not trying to, like, these are all very important points.
Yeah, no, I, I thought we were.
This sounds like a family dispute. Yeah, okay, that's.
Yeah, I thought we were almost finished.
There's actually eighty slots. We don't expect to get through all of it, but we do want to get some very important points.
Mr. Chair, don't we have a cutoff at nine o'clock?
I wasn't surprised when time, apparently that is it, but I would, I would offer that, uh, most of us, I think, would be glad to have you come back sometime soon, so.
Fair enough. And we can make that. But let's talk about a couple of things right now. Because you're a body that conducts a public hearing to elicit. Information that allows you to make an informed, uh, recommendation to the board of trustees. Who can then use it to, uh, approve or deny legislation in the form of zoning. You are restricted in how you can communicate with petitioners outside the context of this room. So remember what I was saying, and some of you said, yes, we visit sites. You visit the site. Um, you're on the sidewalk, you're looking at the site, you might be taking pictures with your camera or whatever. Um, and the property owner might see you, and they might want to come out and start talking to you. Or you could be in the grocery store and someone wants to talk to you because they're aware that so and so has a petition that's pending before you. You haven't started the public hearing yet, or you're already in the context of a public hearing. They might want to talk to you about it. You have to navigate that because that does happen. Uh, it happens in different ways. It happens in different contexts. But you do need to be very aware that you should not be having substantive conversations about a petition that's either. Gonna be coming before you or is already before you and pending. Um, so avoid those types of contacts and keep in mind, there's a public optics aspect to this. And depending on how controversial a case is, if there are people in the community who are, you know, strongly opposed to something. And they see you chatting with the applicant and they know it's the applicant, they're going to start wondering, well, what's going on? So the way to, you know, the way to navigate it is either, you know what, I can't talk to you about it, you know, but I think you're bringing up some important points. Why don't you make sure you come to the next public hearing? Which will be on such and such a date or whatever. So just avoid it as much as you can. Um. Also, you can direct them to staff. Look, I understand the importance of this issue to you and how it relates to the project. I can't talk to you about it, but you, you should call nowhere. So that's, yeah.
I was confronted in a restaurant, my wife and I had dinner, we got up to leave. We were confronted by protesters for the uh, that attended the uh, hearing for the country club.
Hmm.
And uh, there was an exchange. I ignored them. I kept walking. My wife, who was a saint, uh, was very nice to them and continued walking with me. Uh, so what are you doing in a situation like that other than just continue and ignoring the situation?
Yeah, they're trying to provoke a response, right?
Exactly.
So I mean, you, the, the strategy is not good on their part. It makes them look worse, but you handled it as best you can. I think that's what you have to do.
You should go off it to buy a drink.
Now, well, you can't have partake conversations on matters before you or coming before you. Um, elected officials can, but before we do that, yes, you're subject to the gift ban act. I'm not going to get into this a lot. Also, there's ethical principles of planning that the American Planning Association has that mostly applies to those of us who have the A I C P or we are hired as planners. But you are subject to the ethical requirements that apply to elected officials, state officials. Um, don't take gifts from petitioners. Um, you know, if you have any questions about ethics, I strongly encourage you to talk to your village attorney. I don't want to get into this because this can be a whole topic unto itself. So, but just be aware that there are ethical things you need to. Um, I will, the only thing I'll say about conflicts of interest, it's actually very hard to have a conflict of interest and I don't need to get into all the nuances of what would actually trigger a conflict of interest, either by statute or on the law. But it's very hard to have a conflict of interest. So I'm a member of a church and the church wants to, you know, build, you know, a chapel structure that requires a variation. Do I need to um, recuse myself from those discussions? No, you do not. You're not a, you're, there's no financial benefit to you. And that's really what we're talking about, what conflicts of interest are. If something's gonna enrich you in some way because of something that's happening on a property, you very well may have a conflict of interest. Or you may not because you don't own enough stock in the company. And if you look at the statute, like, you know, I work for um, I work for um, a bank, a big bank, Wind Trust. I work for Wind Trust or whatever. Um. I am um, a, a, a branch manager. Do I have a conflict of interest? No, you don't have a conflict of interest. You don't own five percent of the stock of the corporation. I mean, they might, but I don't. I mean, you don't realize how much that actually is in most cases. So conflicts of interest are very hard to come up with, but insofar as you're concerned about it, you just have an idea that maybe there is one, bring it up with staff, staff will take it to the attorney, your attorney can help you with it. If you do have a conflict, you need to recuse and leave the dials. You should not be seen up here at all. You need to announce that I have a conflict of interest. In this case, it's been discussed with staff and the attorney. We all agree I need to recuse myself. I'm recusing myself and recuse and walk off. You can come back um, after whatever that matter is, if there's other things on the agenda, but definitely leave. Okay. Okay, Open Meetings Act, you are subject to the Open Meetings Act, but you're also subject to constitutional considerations concerning due process, both procedural and substantive. Um, I'm not going to get into this a lot, but just be aware that they do apply to you. And tools of the trade, I think. We're in about five minutes. We're in about five minutes. A lot of what comes after this, um, this just gets into, yeah, you have the, and we've actually talked about this in different ways already, but this just talks to you about like different tools that are used for zoning and how, how they're applied in different situations and things like that. So, and then I think after this, we talked about just your lead and stuff.
Any questions?
I got a final one.
Yeah.
Uh, for me. So this is two questions rolled into one. Um, what is your opinion on bringing up past cases during an active case discussion?
Uh, well, like I said, you're not a precedent setting body, so they have minimal relevance to what you are dealing with, with the, you know, the later in line petition. Even if it's closely related to an earlier, you'll see.
I mean, I kind of view it as a yellow flag that shouldn't be doing it because it kind of opens up to future litigation issues.
I, it could create problems for you because what the attorney for the petition will, they'll, they'll definitely take note, oh, they're trying to create a precedent here with our, by something that happened earlier that has nothing to do with us. So.
And, and along those lines, bringing up back of the house issues during the discussion of the case. For the same reason, it's a yellow flag to me that it opens us up to litigation. So if we don't have, in, in, so in other words, if I'm a, if we deny a case, or vote no on a case, if I'm their attorney and we're up here talking about, well, this wasn't right, that was right. And I'm not talking about the fine details, square footage and stuff. I'm talking about other kind of other things that sometimes we bring up and we've all done it. Um. What, does that hang us on it?
Um, yeah, you can definitely get yourself in trouble uh, with that. Again, I think uh, the major theme we'll take away from tonight is, oh, the standards really mean a lot and you need to really think about. Um. You know, getting into the minutia of how something gets to you and whether something was handled correctly or not is that's the family business. And you don't talk about the family business with people outside the family, right?
Kind of what they obviously.
That's all I got. Anyone else? We got a few minutes? All right. Well, thank you very much.
Thank you.
Here.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Oh, no, it's just that.
No, it's. It's the poor.
To go. Yeah, this is always better. I think everybody has a survey as well, so.
Okay, uh, here's your sign and sheet.
Okay.
Um.
Yeah. Survey at the end.
It's very quickly in the end, then, very quickly finish out the agenda. Any old business to bring up? There's no, uh, any new business to bring up? It does no. Uh, motion to adjourn? So, second?
I will second.
That's everybody.
Oh, sorry.
A little favor, I group up on I.
I, I, I.
I guess.
Thank you for being.
Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Thank you. Oh.
I would find her a human like.
Hmm.
Oh, yeah. I should do the exact same thing. This is my real pair of this.
What were you saying about, I, I, I missed the part about the, of the afterwards about.
Oh, oh, you were, oh, at the same time.
Like sometimes we bring up, like you find errors in. Basically, Smith, I mean, we may find errors in the materials or we may find conflicts or we cited a wrong scene or whatever.
Absolutely. Why are you coming to the casino?
Or something like that.
I'll see you on the.
We, that should not be brought up during.
Um, the invites you've received from Sam are probably, and then you'll get a.
Uh, excuse me, we, we do have one, one question and, and this sort of follows what member brands.
I've never said.
Uh, was asking, and, and this is, this is sort of a concern that I have generally.
I don't gamble.
Um, minutes of meetings. You know, I'm not a big fan. Uh, I, I, I mean, I understand what Member O'Brien said historically, litigation. I'm a big fan of transcripts. Meeting transcripts and relying on that rather than summaries.
Yeah.
You know, other than general summaries of what was discussed at the.
I, I have the same.
And that, uh, I mean, I'm okay with, but I'm not a big fan of sort of cutting, talking about failure in writing outside of the transcript. So what's, what's been weird?
Okay. We have it, but I don't.
Yeah, we, we trans, we, we have, we, we.
Yeah. It's something, these are notes, we should definitely, a lot of the procedure applies directly to the state official as well, I guess.
Does that need to be verbatim? It doesn't need to be detailed.
Right.
Oh, I'm, I was.
What was basic?